As Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda our present hearing, school committee members, my colleague, who is bond in the affirmative, Elizabeth Albora. Mark Hogan.
Yes.
Mary Brandy and Marie Roberts will be absent today, so we'll have. All four. Student representatives, do we have them offering?
Not yet.
Right?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay. So we'll circle back to them, a staff that I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Colin and Robyn.
Yes.
Brian Haas.
Yes.
Chuck Carradines.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
No. So the meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a private meeting as allowed by chapter two of the Act of 2023, signed into law by Governor Thierry on March 29th. This act continues to accept certain provisions under the legal agreement of access until March 31st, 2025. The committee is assumed in person as opposed to the district's website. While an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the phone, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems stand to the virtual broadcast to remote attending unless someone's required. Please note that this meeting is being recorded for you to be aware that other folks may be able to see it. I take here not to make sure you're seated. Anything that you brought has maybe captured by the recording, which is audible to people. If you are planning to record this meeting, please leave the ready. Question, student of the chair. You have no. And new materials along the agenda are most of the materials are posted on your website, preferred title 2023. Under the actual meeting, public is encouraged to follow along with the course of the agenda and documents. Unless the chair goes otherwise, public comments. In a time devoted for the school committee to hear the public as such, the instructor clearly supporting directional reporting of public comments rather than a bi-directional conversation. Here are the general rules of any public hearing, any person wishing to speak in any comment during the virtual meeting. So I just publicly advance onto the public comments agenda item. And. At the lead by line, they would say. This better. Sorry, I can't decide what. All public comments, okay, please have your zoom name match that will be able to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone wishes to comment. They need to be heard. No person may comment more than once without issuing at the chair. As time allows, the chair can consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it's a topic that has been brought up. Any person wishing to submit comments to be read by the chair, by email, by email, thanks to fans. The fans too, up into the public agenda item to comment for us to be meet at maynard.com/2023. Subject line must state public comment, please include your first and last. If your comments are read, comments will only run in three minutes. If the submitted comments are lower, they will be suspended at three minutes. To ensure all comments can be read in their entirety, it's just that they tend to a possible words. However, submitting comments longer than 350 words will be included in the public record in entirety. But anyone wishing to submit a comment before, before the record at the agenda item test, by email, comments to comments for us at maynard.com/2023. Up into the end, submitting the same because there's a comment, these additional comments. Being around all of these people. Hold on to me as well. Be respectful. Actually, we will not be able to do both, although as you're all person. So I've been going ahead and following speed to order at seven to five. And proceeding to the first. I am on the agenda, urgent business.
No one.
Wonderful. Public comments, I did not see anything else under meetings. Right? Student representative report. I didn't know if any such had joined or did we have a circle back? Wasn't it? So I'll. I'll go ahead and put that objection, I'll just table that until we know, join then after the superintendent or reporter, they're not getting off. Well. We don't know what's up. All right, so why? To use the present report.
Okay, glad to be here. You think? We had two presentations, actually we had multiple presentations of our FY25 budget, one to see the select for the last week and one to see the finance committee earlier this week. And I will say. Say, or inquisitive, appreciative of the level of clarity and transparency in the budget. That's a good. Good evening. So pretty happy with that. At least in the sense of a meeting. Yeah, they understood. Yeah. Absolutely. We finished, or actually the fire department, we had our bidirectional amplification system final on complete. So that's just a piece of technology that this particular building on the back hallways, upstairs, which allows the fire department to communicate everywhere. Has had been sort of a dead zone in terms of communication services. So thanks to by your chief, chief of laws and a grant, we were able to get that done. And so. A solar project, we had a meeting on the solar project. We've set up by weekly, by weekly, February 5th, that we visit the consultant, two members of team from select and high school administration, principal York and myself will be putting out information either tomorrow, beginning to about project dates and they can start to see some project progress on high school, the front of the building, it'll be the car point that is the first, it'll be noticeable. Some point in the future, they'll be cleaning. Rules that. So they'll be kind of consistent updates on. But I can't say that we'll be breaking ground a couple of weeks later if only. So don't, don't be ashamed for soon. With that, new for projects, but. Likewise, the Bleacher Project, we continue to move forward with that in planning phases that hasn't been approved by the town. But lots of meetings, basically, by weekly meetings for that as well. That's included administration, students, school committee, the design team, the O T M. A lot of really, really good thorough conversations about the site, the design, the options. And really keeping the scope of the project within what the intended scope of that was. So we'll be updating that pretty consistently every couple of weeks will be. And I'll be. MSBA likewise will be moving forward with the, so that project, the MSBA project is metal. That actually is moving forward, it was approved at town. We'll be starting in the next month or so with a pretty consistent subcommittee meetings. But that project is well underway with Ali as our project manager, so that's sharpening us through that process. So that's exciting. At some point within the next few years, it means we will have three really viables. First, town in Massachusetts, that's huge. Because now all times can say that they have to reload the violence. Actually, there's one mess. You know, in challenging conditions such as the current pandemic, that's super exciting for the town. Need to. An update on DECA, which anyone's talking, came up at a recent school meeting. So just. Sort of a refresh on what DECA is, an international nonprofit student led organization that promotes project-based learning approach to the academic disciplines of business by sponsoring chapters in high schools and colleges. And then there's competitions locally, regionally, nationally. The curriculum is based on 21st century career-based skills primarily, homeschooling, communication. Excited to share with you that the Maynard High School DECA chapters in its third year of competition. Growing of 24 registered members, scanning grades nine through 12. Four members qualified for states this year and hopefully another four will be part of the quiz bowl. Since the start of the program in 2021, we've had 18 members qualify for state competitions in Boston in one. So it's in DC, if you will, it's only around three years, but making great thrive and. One of those extra things that we offer. School, but that gets me. And I'm excited and sad to share with you that we have a special guest in the audience, Cindy Blanchard. There, bright pink, if the camera can pan in. Okay. Cindy has been with the Maynard Public Schools for almost 27 years. Long before my time, she has put her time in, she's prior to working in Maynard, she worked on the teaching music and directing multiple plays during her time in Maynard School District, Cindy has worked in all three schools and helped really grow the band and chorus vote until right now we have astounding music, musical performance, both being important. She's part of the reason that they're as good as they are. Some of her best memories were organizing the performance of the Maynard High School for students who went Disney World in Washington DC. This year, she brought back the Green Mill Elementary School, win on performance for age one to three, which we hadn't been able to do for many for actually seven years, so pre the pandemic and whatnot. And I happened to have the opportunity to see them and I think many of you did as well, and they were phenomenal. There were over 300 parents in attendance, it was over a couple of days, it was spectacular. And I knew you were retiring on January 31st, 2024, we wish you the best in all your new ventures, and I'm sure there will be many ventures. I'm a little jealous, but save that for another story. As you gracefully take your final bow on the stage of your illustrious career, I'm compelled to express my deepest appreciation for the profound impact you've had on generations of students. And after 27 years, millions of generations of students, your retirement marks the end of an era. But the melodies of your teaching will resonate in our hearts forever. Throughout the years, your classroom has been more than just a place of learning and has been a sanctuary of creativity, a haven of inspiration and the birthplace of countless musical jerseys. Your unwavering commitment to nurturing the talents of your students has left an indelible mark on our lives, shaping not only our musical, but also our character, our students' ability and their. Your passion for music has been contagious and your ability to transform a simple note into a symphony of emotions has been nothing short of magical. Beyond scales of composition, he taught students the importance of discipline, teamwork and the joy that comes from creating something beautiful together. I've seen that in multiple different ways. As you step into the next movement of your life, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for the art of for having you as part of our educational experience, your dedication, patience and genuine love of your craft have been a guiding light. And the memories you've created in classrooms will hold a special place in everyone's heart. Thank you. May your retirement be filled with the sweet harmonies of relaxation, the joyous refrains of new adventures and the peaceful cadence of a well-deserved remedy. Your legacy as music educator is woven into the very fabric of our schools culture. And your absence will be deeply felt. Thank you very much for all you've done for orchestrating a symphony of learning inspiration. If it's on my rest with the music you've created on door echoing through the borders of our. Wishing you a retirement filled with joy, fulfillment and a continued appreciation of the beautiful art form you so passionately share with us. And we do have something for you, I'm going to give this to you. I know there's not a lot of proud clap, you'll clap. Chuck, happy, very nice, Chuck. Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I must say that the children of Maynard are blessings beyond belief, they are the most wonderful kids with no chips on their shoulder, they're kids who are creative and smart and they want to learn. And that's amazing.
Agreed, and thank you for all you've done for them.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We don't need a stranger.
But a little while, we're soaking, oh, we're gonna see you down.
Actually, no, it's funny when kids see like their teachers outside, you know, of school. Yeah, and I, I'm like my younger ones, but they've gone places. I go, let's get them there, we need space, you know.
When you know you're old, when like half of the kids you teach, you talk to their kid. And it's been decades.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Well, so much for all you do, I know that's such hard work to give a presentation into my school. It is not for the faint of heart and just really appreciated as that's why I stayed so long, it's for these wonderful kids. And thank you for what you're doing for our. This sounds like.
Thank you.
I, I know we have other things on your sprint report, so I'd like to just give. Laura.
I just wanted to. There in the folder, there's a little site for the plan for the soul project, is there, is that there for a reason? Have you talked about that at all?
No, I was just putting it to you about.
Okay, and then if I need the, the timeline correctly, will we have energy from the solar panels? Is that what it's like at these days?
So we should. Yeah, there's some in FY25, the recommendation for. It's all the don't let it's the FY25, so a lot of energy using for FY26 and it may be a little bit. There's a lot of.
All right, but as it stands now, potentially.
Yep.
I think the only thing that I. Question. I'll go back to it, just to tell the other picture stuff. I mean, but thank you, I know there's been a ton of meetings with. The budget. Talking about it, I certainly appreciate you and also today in calling as well. Tending the red meeting, so there's a lot of, a lot of budget and finance. All right. Now, as moving on to that, I'll break the presentation.
Yep, I'm gonna turn that, I'm gonna turn that over to Chuck, he's removed. But he is prepared to share about that.
If you need me to put anything on. Shared slide, I can do that.
I, I just have the write-up that I sent over to Brian. The math pilot update and math programming update. There are actually a couple of, there are several things going on related to math right now. MCAT scores across the state, particularly in math, have dropped. And there are some students that are starting to really show some gaps in their learning around mathematics. We know that our existing math curriculum K to eight, go math is being phased out by the publisher. The text has been withdrawn from publication, the electronic links and website that teachers could use is no longer being supported. It still sort of works, but as links break down, they're not being repaired by HMH. So we know that we need to replace the curriculum K to eight. We also know that we can't really wait around for students who are behind right now, so the state has made a couple of programs available that we've taken advantage of. One of them is called a high dosage math tutoring program. This is specifically for students in grades four to eight. The state is providing this to districts that have applied for it, and I applied for this on behalf of the district. The state picks up all the costs and this resource is made available to the districts at no cost. This is for 12 students in grades, in grade four and 12 students in grade eight. These are students that were identified by their teachers and staff as having a need for additional support in mathematics. They receive small group tutoring, no more than two or three students in a group, it is done virtually. And we have a teacher in the room with the students, one of our teachers, to assist them if they need any help. Make sure they're staying on task. The students receive three 30-minute tutoring sessions per week. It's done during wind time, which is what I need now is what wind stands for, these are 30-minute blocks built into the file or schedule, so the students are not being taken out of any of their other classes for instruction, this is essentially wind blocks are designed to support blocks and the students are receiving support in mathematics. This is for 20 weeks. The program is going to be evaluated by the state. There is pre and post testing to see if it in fact has worked as hoped and intended. And we're about, we're going into our third week of this program. Principal Keith Kinney has reported to me that the students are showing up regularly, the fourth graders are in particular are actually enjoying it. The eighth graders are building up some rapport with their tutors and, and they're really coming along nicely as well. So that's one program that we have in place right now to start to help students who have developed some gaps in math and a need for support. Another program, I know the school committee approved the grant a couple of weeks ago, we've received the official award letter now. This is for math, they're called Math Acceleration Academies. These are for students in grades three to 10, so seven grades, 10 students per grade. And these will be meeting during the February and April school vacations. Lunch and transportation will be provided to the students as well as breakfast. It's designed to be a camp-style, hands-on, project-based program. Some of this is to help with some math and STEM areas that the students are in need of support. But we also want to foster a sense of fun and just, you know, a real building up of the students' desire to be in school. Some of the students who are scuffling in math are, and have some gaps are, are also some students who have kind of lost a little bit of connection with school in general, which is a phenomenon that's being seen all over the country. And we'd really like to have these camp-style events help re-engage the students with the, with the educational process as a whole. So that will be occurring again during the February and April school vacations. The students need not necessarily be the same students in both programs, if students are strengthening and other students are in greater need, that there is the ability for the students to be different. Have some different students in April. We're currently hiring the staff members for this, we've interviewed just about all the applicants. The staff will be made up of a director, we've hired a director for April and for February. At each week, there will also be a nurse, a school counselor, six teachers and four paraprofessionals. So they will be well-staffed for the 70 students, there'll be a real emphasis on attendance. Because that's a habit we would like to rebuild with some of our students, and I think this program is an opportunity to do that. Finally, in the longer term, we have been meeting for over a year with a math curriculum review committee. The team has made two recommendations for pilots and we're considering a third. In order to determine which programs to pilot, there were some criteria that the committee thought needed to be in place. Whatever curriculum is selected to be piloted and then ultimately selected would need to align with the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks and math mathematics. It'd have to be on the highly rated on the curate or ed reports websites that the state supports. We know from our surveying of students and teachers that the curriculum should be culturally appropriate, the students really want to see themselves in the curriculum, and that's actually one of the criterion. One of the categories that is included in curate and ed reports. So we, we want to make sure that whatever curriculum is selected is, is also culturally sensitive to the needs of the students. We have a timeline where we will be making final recommendations for which materials will be piloted by January 29th, which is next week. From February 5th to March 1st, several of the publishers that we're considering include training for staff, so we will be putting training in place. We do have funding available through our Title I grant to do training after school hours as well. From March 1st to April 5th, we intend to pilot the curriculum that we sort of have selected as finalists. From April 5th to approximately the 22nd, the school vacation week is in there, we're going to evaluate the pilots and make a recommendation to the superintendent by April 26th, who will then report to the school committee. So that's the timeline that we are looking at to bring this about, it does include a period of evaluation for the sort of the finalists for piloting, it includes time for training, it includes time for the pilots themselves and then time for the evaluation of the pilots. Various staff members and myself have reached out to the, some area school districts where we know some of the materials we're interested in are in use and we're hoping we have some contacts that have been made, we're hoping to have our teachers be able to visit some of these districts and actually observe the implementation in districts that have been using it for a year or two. And we have outreach to the publishers for, for training and that looks like it will happen as well, so. That's what's going on in the world of math, we're trying to help students in the present with gaps that have opened up. We are trying to bring in some pilot materials that meet the criteria this committee set up. And we should have a recommendation to the superintendent and ultimately the school committee in early May. So that's the news.
Thank you very, very much for this and I'll go around for questions with other members. Laura.
This, this all sounds really great. The main question that I had was what students are going to be done, are going to be the pilot? Like, how, how do you, how are you choosing those?
We're, we're intending to do pilots by whole grade. And we'd like to, most of the publishers will give you a fixed number of units and a limited number of grades, so when we see what the publishers we select offer us, but we, we do want to implement the pilot in an entire grade so that that team can then discuss the efficacy of the pilot, we'd like to line some materials up so that a couple of grades in a row are using the same material, so multiple teams can then talk with each other. So we, we are looking at A to eight. So if we have around roughly two to three grades and two to three pilots, that, that should work out, so we'll be piecing that together in the next just couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. Elizabeth.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, thank you for all this, and I guess my first question is, I'm curious about why the state is particularly interested in grades 40, you know, why they gave you this first grant for tutoring for grades 40?
I have not heard their particular rationale, but I do know that it made a certain amount of sense to me, eighth graders are getting ready to enter high school and they're getting ready for algebra typically. So I think they would like to see students in the eighth grade be able to enter high school in a stronger position for more advanced math classes. I also know fourth grade is when students are supposed to really have their arithmetic skills down. Really addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, starting to branch maybe a little bit into exponents and some of that. So I think they've selected fourth grade most likely to make sure that those. So I think they've selected fourth grade most likely to make sure that those super core skills are strengthened. Before students move up into sort of the middle school grades.
Makes a lot of sense, thank you, and then are they kind of monitoring this, the systems that get the tutoring, see how their M P S scores change? Is that kind of how they're monitoring success?
They are doing a pre and post test, I'm actually not sure what instrument they're using, I can check on that. Um, but I think they are looking to see uh growth and they do have a third party. The state is doing all of this, it's just a matter of districts tapping in. They are having a third-party evaluator also look at the efficacy of uh the tutoring programs, not just in Maynard, but statewide.
Um, and then, so and we'll find the results, I imagine we get the results shared with us as well.
Yes, we will.
Um, and then um in the camp, when uh we're hiring the teachers, I, I'm just wondering, we are hiring a teacher from in the district or are we getting people?
Uh, we're hiring teachers from within the district. So it's teachers, paraprofessionals, nurses, counselors are all being hired from within the district. We have actually uh more applicants than slots. But there are two weeks and some folks have said they're interested in one week and not the other. I, I do think we're gonna wind up with a very qualified team. Part of the criteria for the grant was that we have a competitive interview process. Uh, we developed questions for the interviews. Um, so uh that, you know, we, we are uh fulfilling the grant requirement. But even beyond that, I, I think we really are looking for uh staff members. Who are uh going to foster that camp spirit and and really look at this. As a fun opportunity and I know not a lot of people necessarily associate math with fun. Um, I do, I, I, I may be a little unusual in that respect, but things like math and science um. When it's decoupled from math sequencing like it is during the school year. I think if you have some interesting interactive projects, they can be fun and they can fill a few math gaps. Uh, kind of while you're at it. Um, but beyond that too, I think for some of these students, we, we actually are selecting students. That have had some attendance difficulties as well, we, we're really trying to get some students reconnected to. And and have them think of school as a, as a fun and good place to be with some adults around. Who really are interested in their growth and care about them, so we're, we're really. We're, we're not, we're not gonna be satisfied with just filling a few math gaps. One week isn't going to be a math cure, but if we could get some of the students. Re-engaged, more interested in in coming to school with greater regularity, I think that'll really be the long-term benefit.
Makes a lot of sense, I think, yeah, that gives a bad rap as being, you know, all kinds of things, I think that makes a lot of sense. And then, so the kids are like, they're kind of group, group by grade, is that kind of how it works?
It, it'll probably be uh perhaps two grades together, um, in some cases. There are six teachers in seven grades, so by definition, at least a couple of the grades will be uh coupled. We're looking at the final enrollment figures to determine the best way to to group those students. I've also talked to the folks who've been hired to be the coordinators. That really to look at the students in ninth and tenth grade is is also as a resource for the younger students. That I think they could, they could do some sort of peer mentoring and modeling in a positive way. Uh, and I, I think that will have benefits for both the older students as mentors and the, the younger students. Kind of seeing the big kids, so um that, that's something we'd like to have as part of the program as well.
Great, like camp counselors for math.
Sort of, sort of junior counselors perhaps, yeah.
And then, um, and then, so next week, you're gonna know which pilot project uh uh curriculums you're gonna choose. I was wondering if we get to know what they are, just because I'm excited to know what they are.
Uh, sure, uh, I, I'm, I know that the group has settled on two already very strongly. Illustrative math and Carnegie math. And there's some debate about a third and it may just be those two or we may add a third. There are, there are a couple we're still considering there.
Um, thank you for that, and then, and then, um, so it's, it's great that the businesses will give you. Like a couple of different pilot, you know, grades. Um, do they also give you after you got, you know, bought the curriculum, do they give you some kind of opportunity to reevaluate during this whole school year? You know, once you've just tried a little bit, you've been in, let's say, next November, do they say, actually, this one's not working out as well, or how does it work there?
So, once we adopt the curriculum, um. The publishers involved do include training as part of the package. We'd be looking to front-load some of the training, but we understand that, you know, not everyone is available. The dates that we'll be doing some of the training, probably the week before students come in and staff report. Um, so we do know that we'll need to use some of our early professional development days to work specifically on math as well. Um, and we will be evaluating it through the year. I also know that um fidelity to implementation is going to be important. It's gonna be very important that we don't have. Um, individual teachers who just decide sort of, I've got math I've been using for years, I think it's great. So I'm gonna do my own thing because that can distort the sequence of, of a program. So um, you know, that's something where the uh building principals and assistant principals. As they circulate and do their classroom visits will need to be um aware of. We also know that in implementation, it's really not fair to look at results. After a single year, the teachers are getting used to the curriculum, they're developing new units. Um, it's really a two to three-year process before things smooth out. We're, we're seeing that with our ELA curriculum now, we're, we're seeing, I, I'm getting reports from the principals and assistant principals. That there's a lot more fidelity to the program, the pacing in the ELA program has uh increased. The staff is clearly more comfortable with it and that took a couple of years to get to this point and I'm sure there'll be further tweaks next year. But there's no reason to think that uh a similar trajectory wouldn't be in any curricular area. Where, you know, year, year one, uh, the staff is getting used to it, there's a few bumps. It starts uh improving in year two, it's usually humming along by year three with tweaks at that point. So um, I think the key thing is we haven't had a coherent. Even though we've nominally been a Go Math district for many years, uh, the reports I'm getting from the real world are. That uh several grades and teachers uh have kind of used it as perhaps a resource. But have sort of developed their own things over the years and as a result, there hasn't been a lot of consistency. Grade to grade or even sometimes within a grade, classroom to classroom. So uh, we're, we're, we're looking to iron that out as well.
Makes a lot of sense and thank you so much. Um, and I guess my last question is, um, in the end, two questions, uh, you will be choosing either illustrative or. You'll be choosing one of the two, it's not like the, the literacy curriculum where you're kind of taking part of one another. It's another kind of thing where it's cohesive and just one of the two, sorry?
We may, we may wind up uh. W- one of the curricular goes up through grade five. So we may wind up with one K to five and another six to eight. Um, one of the curricular packages is K to eight. So um, we are open to adopting two curric- two curriculum packages. But they would be um. Grade consistent, so they wouldn't be like kindergarten is one and then first grade is another, there would be a block. And then another block, uh, they appear to align fairly well. Some of the districts we've made contact with are using two in that fashion. So um, we have not ruled that out, we also haven't ruled it in.
And then I guess I'm curious about how do you evaluate, you know, what kind of system are you using to decide if it works and, you know, after the pilot?
Uh, so, so we're, we're gonna, there are some uh tools out there that are, that um. We've downloaded and looked at, um, the teachers who are actually implementing will then be meeting as grade teams. And, and uh going over these together. Uh, they'll then meet across grades and compare notes that way as well. So we're hoping, you never know, but I'm, I'm hoping there's some level of reasonably strong consensus. I don't think there would be, ever be unanimity with so many people involved, but it would be nice if a strong consensus emerged.
Great, well, thank you for all of your answers and all the preparation and for doing all this work, it's important that it's being done, so thank you so much.
Yes.
Um, I, I heard, I was trying to write down what it was, it was um. Party and illustrative math, those are the two that are.
Those are, those have been strongly endorsed and we're, we're looking at a couple more um that might sort of make the cut.
And to follow up on that's point about the uh framework, I guess we're the. It will, in one particular grade will be a consistent curriculum. Uh, for that, so I just, I know like the literacy in elementary, it's, it's kind of different. Components that are not necessarily in one particular or curriculum, it's supplemental by products. That's not what we would expect from, from that, is that right?
I, I, you broke up a little bit, but I think I got the gist of the question. We, we would expect a grade level to uniformly adopt the math curriculum. And focus on the same key areas.
Um, and then looking at the, the timeline that you have outlined for, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
All right, the timeline, so this um, there's gonna be for the, the staff there that are gonna be engaged. The pilot, there's gonna be professional development um starting pretty soon, so.
Within a couple of weeks, yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, so I'm, I'm guessing that the curriculum would have to be, whatever pilots that you would be. Using would be close to being decided.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've received sample materials from several publishers. And the staff have already begun looking them over. So we have sample units from Carnegie and illustrative, we also have sample units from several other publishers, some of which we've ruled out. Um, so uh, teachers do have hand, and the committee have hands-on. But we'll have additional samples when we get down to the pilot.
Um, how are parents engaged that will be part of, whose kids will be in these? Pilot, maybe advise that, oh, this pilot, this curriculum, and what they might expect different um from Go Math?
I, you, we, we will be sending out to parents that we are doing pilots. But we're not doing pilots in the sense of selective students within a grade, it's going to be piloted across the grade. So um, and the teachers are going to be looking at units that are in, in sequence with what they're doing. So if we do this for say three or four week pilot, that'd probably be about a unit, maybe a little bit more. And it would be consistent with the unit that would have been in that spot. So if it's, you know, if uh, a teacher is doing pre-algebra. In seventh grade, um, all the students would be doing the same concept in pre-algebra. At the same as in that sequence, because once the pilot is over, we're gonna need to finish the year. With our existing curriculum, so we don't want something kind of out of left field or something that doesn't line up. Um, it would be an alternative set of materials on the same topic that would normally be occurring at that time.
Um, yeah, and I think only because I know that it's gonna happen, as you mentioned, like in the middle of a, it's, it's not like it's gonna be replacing. But it'll be kind of like a sample uh in the middle of, of the year. I just was wondering, but if some, some parents are very curious, I, any communication about how this pilot will be happening? And what are the options that would be helpful for parents, wanna maybe read about the different curriculums? There is interest from parents to do that and I think.
Actually, a week, we can put that into the communication, any parent could go to curate or ed reports. And you would be stunned by how much information is, is there, including sample units. Illustrative math is very interesting, it's an open source, so you can actually register and look at all their materials. Um, so if a parent wanted to, they could get a wealth of information about. How the curricular materials are evaluated, look at the materials themselves. And actually look at very detailed reports on each of the items that will be piloting.
And I think that's really what I'm trying, I know there's so much work behind the scenes, it's going into the, the research and uh the planning for this. Um, that a lot of people just don't see, you know, and I think it just is really helpful to communicate. This is the, you know, these are the steps that we, we're taking, so people can understand how the curriculum are being chosen that are, you know, uh, researched. Based, e- evidence-based and the tools that we're doing as a district to, you know, to bring us to a better place. Along, as you mentioned earlier, for, for our different grades. Um, so I, I just, knowing that we have so many different projects going on, sometimes people like to get, I guess, the window into the, with that journey. Um, and how, how that's happening, uh, so.
Well, we'll, we'll even show them the dartboard we use.
Um, and I, I think it's all, but I, I know from a budget perspective, Brian, this is part of our, we have this baked into the budget. Request and if I, there, there are grants that are coming out. Or frequently that we're exploring, I don't think there was something even just announced, it's more about literacy. I think earlier this week that they're emphasizing more, but just thinking if there's any other grant opportunities we can get that could help.
Yep, that we would for all.
Yeah, a, a- actually, part of, this is not the sole reason by any means, it's actually very well researched. But um, if the state were to make grants available in math. Um, we could pretty much count on that there would be an insistence that the materials be found on either ed reports or curate. So um, it's another reason to use those resources is you, the state is now in the habit of not funding materials. That aren't on those lists and in a variety of curricular areas. So it would position us, should funding become available, to be u- utilizing a curriculum. That would allow us to tap into funds.
Perfect, hopefully it will have something surprise us available for.
It would be wonderful, you know, it'd be really nice. If, 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 if they could find eighty thousand for our two weeks of vacation, uh, school vacation weeks. It'd be really nice if they could find eighty thousand for our adoption.
Yeah. Uh, I, I don't have any other questions except for it looks like we won't expect, I guess, an update. Brian, you'll just continue to update us or, or, or chat as the pilot just um, great.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, I don't think we have any of the students who joined, so I think I'll just go ahead and. Read uh. Okay, uh, highlights, please show positive feedback on the show, it's very interesting to see how a freshman. Game show is shot at G H Studios, midterms, all midterms are able to proceed even well. Despite snowy weather, second semester classes, um, second quarter person out and semester two classes are starting. Advisories, round of advisories started January twenty fourth, advisories have, um, have been a big hit, especially. The Lego Icebreaker, this series felt bad. Um, basketball, if you were trapped going well, school records, winter track, relay was broken Friday night. Please honor report, um, would be cost-effective to compost, however, only with integrity of composting done. When professionals are landing. When integrity of composting done, when professionals are making compost fit. If compost is not pure, we'll be charged for it. We'll be exploring ways to make composting work. By design and expanding to all of the student council, further piloting. And their student productivity dashboard. Ireland trip with the V M tours was introduced, January twenty, I'm sorry, June twenty twenty five. Uh, with Mrs. Behavits and Mr. Soto, if students are interested. The proposed trip will be presented to the school by Mr. Soto before again. Uh, concerns. This snow day, some students in battles, we felt that the roads were slippery, so parking and. Driving concerns, there were many, and they were able to get most of them out during the snow. Uh, during the snow, it's due for, uh, we'd like to invite superintendent. To a sat meeting to discuss how he makes the decisions about snow delays at school. That sounds like a follow-up to uh one hour delay versus the two hour possibly. Um, curious. Uh, senior project. And a first step to reform the program, all senior projects. Senior project classrooms have. And to the library, seniors wanting to be more spread out, while working on their research paper, etc., tough to do in a classroom. Graduation, it's for the I P L chairs, all has a view facing a stage, but it's not affordable. Families will be on winters with their backs to one seven two, faces get away from how it is done. Some seats will have an insert as of electors polls. Um, to go back to that, lunch concerns, a lunch line, they wanna get pizza, you can't get it because of where the light is. It allows you to go other way around to get pizza. We will check in with Miss Mitchell's home, since she did not happy with the lunch options. Let's do a new survey again, so. Oh, we're going back, sorry. Um, this doctor of will send a survey, Julie Kell, would uh post it on Instagram. Base of a survey, we will decide in another week to be scheduled. Wanting more samples, sell large related business. And upcoming, they have the National Honor Society induction ceremony, DECA. Um, states, they have the mask and. Hyannis, uh, student council, uh, the garden sponsor, that America's night out, things happening. Uh, if you're scheduling. For next year, uh, National Honor Society will be. Uh, privileged, possibly junior privilege, stretch of the soul, and on people start. Say, last. Tiny time, um, this is February, but this is where we'll communicate all disruptions of parking and traffic. So. I had just a couple of things I wouldn't even know, but I don't know anyone that are here, but. Now.
I mean, I just, I wish that when they. Like if they're not gonna be here, maybe just make them a narrative. There's some things that are very clear, that would be nice to them. I think one where they will do that, because it's like an outline.
Maybe there's anything particular, I mean, I can pass that to them all. But. Sounds like good feedback. Um. Yeah, because it felt very, I was reading, like I had no contact myself. Um, so Brian, um, the snow days has.
I'm on their exact agenda, I mean.
Okay. I know this came up at the last meeting, and I didn't know that. I was thinking it was about one day, like.
Maybe. Hi, okay, that's fine. It's kind of short, sweet.
Yeah.
No problem, I know it's ready on their agenda for next. I think it's.
Okay, uh, writing, so. Let's update it on how that goes. Um, and then graduation. I know that last year. Congratulations, we did it inside this weather, but it actually was very successful, and I felt like there was no drug abuse, it was a really good experience. I wonder if that, you know, centered. The student. Uh, I don't know, but I heard a lot of, I didn't really, I liked it. But I'm just.
Acoustics were great.
Yeah, the acoustics were great, and then um you'd see like, well, they had a TV screen. See, like, it looks like they're concerned about. People that basically like the the whole obstructed, so I don't know if that might be a better option to think about. To do it, um, there's no obstruction, you know, there's a. Seem to, I don't know, you could hear the sound music very well, um. So I I would just wonder if that, if if there was a, that has been considered. And also, uh, because I hate to spend money with. On bleach, I'll be honest, and I couldn't give them money, like, it's not, it's not an experience that people enjoy. Just jumps their backs or facing their cars going back, is that something that really is uh? Something I would need to. And then the lunch concerns, uh, I know that you talked about. Having Winston's come to the school meeting, uh, there are the next, the next one, or are you?
Maybe.
Okay, okay, so, okay, maybe you can let them know that as well. And then we go.
Yep.
Give them an update that, uh, we are expecting the Winston to come. The school maybe, so. If they wanna ask the questions or, you know, something that they would like to share. They wanted to. Right, that is all that I have for. The student. And then now to go back to the budget, I'm trying to find the budget update. So. Mentioned earlier, Brian, and I've been to this this select board meeting, we went to finance meeting. Um, I will say. There was a lot of questions from the. This one board meeting that uh. We felt that our our ask was um. Disrespectful or something that was the tone. Overall, and I. Um, I was asked by a select one number and. Consider a budget message that was sent by the uh that this luck were put out. And uh my response, actually. I was asked. The first line. That we talk about, we think that would take me to consideration, removing the budget forward, and they were just curious about how this one words message. Um. How factor that in to the current, considering the current financial climate of the town. My response was, school budget process starts before the message comes out. And it certainly, uh, we are aware that we uh in the circulating and of course, we always look at it, but then we also measure that. To what, to support our students and our staff. And so that did not land as well for some some folks, they felt that that meant that we disregarded. This message, and I will say that I stand by my nerves that factor in the feedback, which is considerate. But ultimately, our role as school members are to advocate and uh what students and staff. So it just was a very contentious discussion. Overall, just like go back into the school, now there's luck working, right, but it wants to. Have their own thoughts that. Uh, well, so the update that we got from Brett, that uh it was, looks like it was two point seven four percent. Was the uh. Recommendations put forward to the select board. That is um. General government is giving over eleven percent. And. Safety over six percent. And general government is getting, um, anticipated, get, I think it was four hundred and. Four hundred and twenty thousand. And the school is maybe getting six, but considering that the expenses for the school are sixty percent of the town's budget, it just. In my personal feeling, felt very disproportionate. Uh, it is something that finance committee. Observed because the uh recommendation didn't come out until after we were at a select board meeting, so it's four hundred percent. That we, that we, so I think we're gonna get some, here's some questions um. For that. Uh, from the FinCom is gonna be asking about that, because. You know, I did also say to. Finance committee went back with that, that. The school committee, because we had talked about this at one point, would like to understand what analysis staffing. Are 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 taking place in other departments, you know, why is it that when there's a, I need to cut or trim that? It's the school's budget who has to, we don't want to. Absorb that, I know it's the largest, but it's not really fair to our staff that we have to constantly have them. And they're the ones who offer cuts versus. Any other, you don't hear, maybe there is that announced, we just don't care about it. I think it's important to town, here how budget. The town is not making money. So it's a town special, that's how I think it shouldn't. So um, so anyway, I um. We will be, uh, Brian is gonna be doing like a quick presentation at that Saturday. Uh, the joint budget review. And uh, I think we're gonna have a discussion. Uh, and it could, discussion points could talk about like. Over ride. Although this one board. Uh, felt that conversations are rather insulting. That was actually what was said, so I don't think it's so good to talk about options for our town. I still would go forward with it, but I think it does a disservice. Not actually talk about what means. Anyway, so this is what we're.
Um, I would think it, it sounds. It's, it just seems to me like the reality situation is that it's going to be. Right, it's not really, how do we just focus on like the numbers? Take it out of things.
I think it's just the, I don't think we've presented anything, I don't, I I don't recall us, we've never made it. Like pointing out to one person. I I responded based on like, I I went to that meeting, my word was characterized, so I thought, I thought it was very hostile. And so that makes it feel personal, you know, when someone says something and it's characterized with your words. Um, you know, one of the things that was brought up about. Right, I said someone was like, well, Natasha always says you can't use brand money to cover operating. Like, it was just like missing the point of what the rhetoric were to do. Um, and to clarify, um, yes, you should not be using grant funds to certify that. Operating expenses, you should be using it to supplement, it's not a Natasha law, that is a a state, DESI federal guideline, but. People get kind of, you know, it's like a gotcha question, well, why are you using Esser funds to to cover the stuff? And like, well, Esser funds were different, I was like the one time they were very prescribed, it was just child like. I don't know, I just didn't feel it was actually constructive, I didn't, I didn't, you know, at all, some people maybe felt it was, I I I certainly don't. I think until the membership of service network changes, I think it's just gonna be the way.
Is there anything? Refocus us to the town, to like the process that. You know, like the things like asking them, like to maybe there are lots of one. And having a staff, like it's sort of a.
Yeah, the agenda hasn't been posted, it will be, uh, I think they're gonna be doing like Greg into his presentation. And sorry, release the narrative, some people found the narrative to be very biased as well, I mean, no, this is not new stuff, not like. Well, we do all this with schools, so we can't do any, play anything else, so anyway. I think, um, we take away from FinComs, I felt that was a very, a lot more constructive. This dialogue was understanding the impact of what the cuts are. Um, you know, the reality is, there are about, I think there's two positions that are not as refunded that were. Kind of, so we had to say, I think the assumption is. As we're finding positions are not gonna be, that seemed to be the tone, that they're just not, not considering, the note is. Those were gonna sunset. Um, the ones that would be cutting beyond that, and the Spanish version was still like, you know, consideration the high school position, but the. Or a help, uh, which wasn't. And it was, there was a question about clients and how that, so yeah, is it out of clients, yeah. Do I know, question was the impact, and I don't know, Brian, I don't know if we have any. Like what the impact is of the state, if us not leaving. I think it's just kind of like a risk, you know? Right, but I thought that part of that was that we could go to the state and and get a waiver. For kids that are doing. I thi- I think that they didn't do that, like they didn't allow the sports, that was part of the. They create their own waiver, like, what would we do? So it's just like a past practice. Yeah, um, and I think what Mary's, I don't wanna lose, like Mary brought up about, um. The certification, I think she was concerned with uh.
Yeah.
Yes, certification, so I don't know if that has come up. How that, is there a concern that we're, no, okay, all right, so. Maybe get some clarity, that could be shared with the school, maybe about that particular piece, uh. Would be helpful. Uh, so as a standard now for budget. Um, maybe have the beginning number. Uh, don't have, the state hasn't released their first house yet, so that should be coming out soon. It's supposed to be up by the end of the month, so Governor KLA will release their first. Uh, her, the first version. Um. They. They have cut back, there's there's anticipated loss of revenue at the state level, but it looks like they're gonna cut back on remarks for this year. And I don't think that they're gonna be shortchanging open local aid. Uh, in the future, but the other budget conversations are, you know, features. Uh, we receive that, that's gonna be a massive town. For me, I I it's hard for me to think. I don't know, I I just, I don't know, anything that you can make questions or.
No, I I did. Bruce. Greg's. Document, um, and. Yeah, I was, I was. So, um. No, I wish that there was, I mean, I'm I'm, I was glad to see, but I feel like I should never see. Where they actually put out what they. What other. Are doing, how much they're at. So I was glad to see that, but um. Yeah, I mean, overall, I just feel like we're we're not. As a town. Working together to figure out. How. You know. Boost all of us, you know, every revenue, like, you know, kind of. Figuring out and and actually taking steps towards improving things, like if we, if we. We want expansion, we have to figure out what we need to do at the bottom. Sewer. But I feel like we're we're just talking, it all just talking, and no, and no. We can't move forward without winning.
Yeah, so I think that was the other part that we asked, uh, Mary brought up at the town budgets up to the meeting that, you know, when we. Like, what are we gonna do? Now, we're gonna. Talk, uh. We we wanted to say, okay, let's revisit the things that we left off with last year, which were override, water, sewer. And, you know, what are we gonna be, I feel like we. Since last year, since we were talking about that. And I I struggle because I feel, I feel that if we advocate for things in the school. Which is what I think we're supposed to be doing, that. That we're we're like the the. It's almost like they don't want us asked, you know, like it's better, it's better off, you don't ask, and I don't feel that that is. Appropriate or acceptable. I know, yeah, it's like, so you get mad or you're upset that we're asking, we're trying to, we're trying to educate the cost of education, which is not unique to Vayner, it's like. You know, I think the the slides that Brian provided about the the state trends was very well received. So that was good, I I think those are, you know, kind of gives context to like, you know, the L L population are going up, like the needs are still going up. Uh, but anyway, so that's kind of.
Well, I am glad that, um, you know, the the slide deck that we're, that you did provide. Brian, for the other provided, um. Were well, well, this gave, but you know, the the information that was asked for. That they got, you know, that. Yeah, glad that, you know, there there weren't the.
I think the only thing was, um. The starting point, right, I think that, that we knew that that was the, you know, we're starting, our, we're starting at what we spend up here before. And that's like, before, we spent, you know, raising there, and they are starting at what they allocate it to us. Which is already below, so I think the starting point is, you know, that was a question like, we wanna understand apples to apples. On apples to oranges, and what we're actually. Looking for. But anyway, so those are, that's my, my thoughts by the C B C. Met with them a couple of times, also by the grant. And we did have that number, that rough number about the bleacher. Which was almost three million dollars, which was quite astronomical. Sorry. Oh, and the word that kept on was brought to us like project free. So the concern that was brought up for you is that, well, what we're seeing here is project free. And I don't think we saw. Project free, I guess. Yeah, so we, you know, I think it's just the bathroom project or the bathroom most, you know, it's, it's a shocking thing for people with quarter coddies, but. There is not really a project free, it's like bleachers. Bathroom, A B A components. Yeah, so.
And considering that the state just created all their, you know. There's not much.
But anyway, just that's, that's the, that was the perception also that.
No, I, I get that. But, you know, it's something that. He, he is a district. Decided that we didn't want. We all flag for.
So I think everyone just going to actually have people who know it's. Cost of living is, is, is part. It's a lot for the committee, how do we? Work for together, it's really good issue. Alright, those are my budget updates that I have. Some committee. Yeah. The subcommittee.
And now I'm gonna make that happen as I go through the, you know, the subcommittee before it was. School meeting. In that meeting, it was an. So I think that's really good news, it was. Excited about it.
Okay, that's that, the same one.
Yep, yes, so Peter, whose name I keep forgetting. Make each other know, they make sense, well, we want to.
And then just to borrow, I know, we're. We're thinking about having, the next thing is when Brian's going to. Share his figure. So they'll. Provide to us. Second step, so we'll have it on our next week. Tomorrow. Updates, your policy.
Yeah, we're. Little bit of an update, but. So. But Brian and I met just. Figure out how to, how to move forward. And so we. We even spoke with. Sarah, the lawyer about. Kind of what we often need to do to go to you forward, and then I also. It's been a week, so. Send her another. No. But. But. I, I, I'm not really sure, maybe we did some sort of workshop before, so.
I think we should, I think we just need to like, just say, okay, let's have a workshop, let's talk about our plan in minutes. What do Brian recommend, give him, you know, coming as far as, it's the, let's search it away, it's not gonna get. Getting easier. I know Mary would be, I know she's mentioned she would be in favor of just doing.
So we accept the vision with Tracy and set up. Make sure that the thing, the.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so I'm hoping, actually, if I don't.
For that. Let's see, last week, I went to the Spanish American night, which is really good. Really great turnout. We had four students. From two from the junior class to from the sophomore class. So it happened that that morning, Jen Adams, who's the high school. One of high school teachers. Had found out. Finalized. The plan for next year for the seniors. So that, what that. Is from world life is. Two, two basketball classes. One, you can fall, and then one. Not really sure what happens. In between, like, so if. Follow those two, you know, year this number, what happens this number to when the next starts. Whatever. So. But they'll get full credit, full. College credits for those two. Similar, like. Actual professor, but. So they'll be, you know, kids will be on their classroom with that.
That was great. I love how they, just Brian, every year they start to do that Spanish immersion world language. Yeah, I feel like we so needed it a while ago, and it's been going on. We're here possibly, but. I thought it was wildly successful.
And there were a lot, like, there were, there were. Parents with, you know, they come. In the garden, and, and there were parents from, you know. With kids that they high school or from into my school, so, you know, a good range of. Knowing just to, you know, just hear about, like, how things move on throughout.
And then Tuesday, I listened in on the CPAC neurodiversity. Good. I, I think that I thought was really cool was they had. One of the. It was good to just see that that was. A possibility. Yeah, the presenter, she actually is Portuguese, she didn't, she doesn't, she said she would speak English, but she types it all, so she just kind of said she would follow the whole bunch of great resources. How she can help her child. Yeah, I'm glad, actually, it did happen, I've seen that a couple of presenters. This year, and I know him. From sorrow, this really helped kind of. Get the momentum to, they have people that she's either work with or she's intended. In her professional role, so I just poot those two to keep. Okay, well, then I think now we'll move on to the. Set agenda. Right, we have November fifteenth, twenty twenty three, and December sixth, twenty twenty three. So without objection, I. The success of tennis with edits. Right, no objection, thank. And then.
Thirty eight, seventy nine, forty and forty one.
Okay, so without objection, I believe that. Accept the improvement for twenty four dash zero three eight dash zero. Zero four zero, dash zero. And are accepted. So. That is the last of our meeting, so now we can reach the executive session under. M T L chapter thirty eight, section one one eight and three, to discuss. Public bargaining with teachers, M A six. Of the bargaining position of the public body, and the chairs and players, the committee is not intended to return to the opening session, and we will have. Those will be real, we'll call.